Call to order the Chaska City Planning Commission for March 14th. A roll call, please.
Bovee?
Here.
Cross?
Here.
Dahlke?
Here.
Kelly?
Here.
Keport?
Here.
Pfeifer? Long and Sherperson Keport. Should've done yours last.
That's fine, I'm here. Can I have a motion to adopt the agenda, please?
I have a problem with that.
Okay.
I have a problem with number eight. And it's based on an action that we took in May of seventeen, so it's not anything new. In May of seventeen, we were questioning having two unlike projects put together and having it as one motion at the end. And we mentioned a shared concept plan is fine, but once it is at preliminary stage, each project should be separate. Commissioner Keport stated he felt the same with the site plan of Dairy Queen and the apartment. I realize number eight has three quite separate projects that are under one motion, and I'm uncomfortable with that.
Question for staff if that's something we can separate out at this stage.
Yes, you can, if you want to do it project per project. But I guess staff's recommendation is that we do see this as one development project, and it would be appropriate to make one motion on it. But again, if you feel differently and you want to make a motion by each building or site, that's your call.
Well, if that's the case, I'd say we defer that decision until we reach that agenda item, and I take the agenda as it is. So, again, I would ask for a motion to approve the agenda.
No move.
And a second?
Second.
Motion by Dahlke, second by Bovee. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Visitor presentation. This is an opportunity for anyone that would like to address the planning commission for items that are not on the agenda. Seeing none, we'll close the visitor presentation, and I need a motion to approve the minutes of the January tenth, two thousand and eighteen Planning Commission meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the January tenth Planning Commission.
Motion by Bowie?
Second.
Second by Kelly. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I so moved.
Moved by Commissioner Cross, and a second?
Second.
Second by Dahlke. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item seven is a public hearing, the conditional use permit for Lake Hazelton Transmission Line, Excel Energy Planning Commission, twenty eighteen dash oh six. Liz.
Thank you, members of the planning commission. We're looking at a conditional use permit request specifically for the Lake Hazelton Transmission Line here in Chaska. So, I provided a couple exhibits in the front of this presentation to give you an example of where the project's scope area of this transmission line will be located. So, as you see in the orange-yellow line on the aerial photograph here is basically the general area that the transmission line will be impacting. So, it basically starts in the city of Chanhassen, where their transmission line ends over there, and then proceeds into Chaska, mainly along the south side of Lyman Boulevard, and crossing into the Twin Cities and Western Railline Corridor, and then connecting up into our new substation in the Northern Industrial Park off of Columbia Court West. This is also another exhibit kind of showing that general area, but as you can see, it's not as easy to read on that exhibit. So, to give you a background, so in February of two thousand and seventeen, we did approve the conditional use permit request for the Lake Hazelton Substation, which was on that Columbia Court West location in the city. It has recently been constructed, so at this time, it is not operational because it is not hooked up to the power line out there. So, the proposed project tonight will provide the transmission line to connect into the substation and provide the power reliability and redundancy that that substation needs. So, in terms of the overall site that we're looking at tonight, the areas in Chaska that are impacted by this transmission line, all of them are zoned industrial or located in the industrial park. The line itself, or the transmission line, is proposed to be a hundred and fifteen kilowatt double-circuit transmission line. In total length that it encompasses, it will cross one and a half miles. And again, that starts in Chanhassen and ends in Chaska here. Eighteen pole structures will be a part of that one point five mile length. These poles will range in height from eighty to a hundred and ten feet, and a conditional use permit is required for this type of essential service in the city. Here's a rendering showing kind of a real-time view of how you would view this from a certain part of town. This specifically is looking at the view from the intersection of Lyman Boulevard and Audubon Road, so more on kind of the cusp of Chanhassen and Chaska here. So, looking southerly, basically down Lyman Boulevard is what you see there, and then the pole structures within it. So, to review and consider a conditional use permit request, there is a set of criteria that does need to be met for it to be approved. So, I'm just going to highlight on a couple of these specific to this proposal tonight. So, the first one, the establishment, maintenance, or operation of the special use will not be detrimental to or endanger the public health, safety, comfort, or general welfare. So, to kind of answer, that standard there, the, it is an essential use, it is necessary for this type of improvement to locate in town to serve our substation, necessary to serve electricity to not only the industrial properties over in the north side there, but also the residents of Chaska. And the fact that it's locating in an industrial area, it will be compatible with the land uses over there. It will be in the most minimally invasive area, as it will locate mainly along existing right-of-way and electric lines along that, as well as the Twin Cities and Western Railline, which is a pretty heavily treed corridor where you won't see much of the action over there. In terms of item C, the establishment of the special use will not impede the normal and orderly development and improvement of surrounding property for uses permitted in the district. So, this transmission line will be equipped with the technology that it needs to provide protective devices and safeguards to the general public if it were to experience an accident of any sort. So, they'll have that technology in place to ensure safety around these structures. They will also be co-locating where there is an existing electric line along Lyman Boulevard. So, if you've driven along Lyman, you can see an existing transmission or electric line there. So, it will be locating basically in that same location that you see today. Adequate utilities, access roads, drainage, and necessary facilities have been or will be provided. So, again, the site does lend itself to be the best location for the transmission line to connect into the proximate existing line that ends in Chanhassen, and it will provide, again, the minimally or least invasive path to the substation in Chaska. And again, the capacity that it will be able to provide will serve the capacity needed in the Northern Industrial Park and for the residents. So, in conclusion, we are asking you to make a motion to recommend approval of the conditional use permit for the Lake Hazelton Transmission Line, and then subject to the conditions that are listed in your staff report. I'm happy to answer any questions, otherwise the applicants are here from Excel Energy, as well as someone from our electric department, if you have any specific questions related to the technology and whatnot.
Question for applicant or for staff?
Well, either, I'm just wondering, the height difference of the poles that are already over there with the new poles, the distance between the lines, because you're putting poles next to the distribution line already. I'm just wondering, the distance between the wires?
Sure. And I might have the applicant come up and answer that, because they might be able to go into more specifics.
Then I have one little dumb question. I assume it's a leftover with no structures on it, but for Kevin Haldick, that little tiny piece that the line is going to go over, is that just a leftover, nothing done land? It's real tiny on the, next to the railroad. It's a little b, little for, right, go upward, no?
Over here?
No. It shows up on this one.
Is it towards the center, easterly, westerly side?
I'm sorry.
I'm not really sure what you're referring to.
It's near pole ten. Does, that doesn't have the poles numbers on there. The name is on...
Just tell me when I'm close.
It's a little triangle. I assume it's leftover from something else, and I assume there's no house on it. I just don't know even if there's access to it, but...
So, are you talking in the Chanhassen side?
No, 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 no.
It's a old...
This one?
Edge of a railroad stub.
It's a railroad stub?
A former railroad stub that used to come into that site.
Railroad stub, okay. That's, I was just curious on how it ended up there. All right. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions for Liz?
This may be just really just a goofy question, but is it common, more common to run these above ground as opposed to below ground, and the reason why?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's connecting into an existing above-ground system already, so, you know, they're just maintaining that same type of system with this extension. The applicant might be able to answer more or less when they decide to go below ground versus above ground, and what was decided for this in particular. But just the existing system that it's connecting into today is an above-ground system, so...
It's also typically been the city policy that the local distribution system tries to be underground, and the big transmission facilities are above ground. It helps with finding faults as well. If there's an outage, it affects more people, and you can, it's also more costly, significantly more costly to go underground with the bigger wire because of insulation requirements. And so, it's kind of a three-fold process, but historically, in the city, even with our own lines, our transmission facilities are above ground, and our distribution typically are below ground. And this is a transmission facility, so it would be above ground.
Thank you, Kevin.
Yep.
Okay, at this time, I'd like to give the applicant an opportunity to address the commission.
Good evening, I'm Brian Sullivan, I'm with Excel Energy, offices in Minneapolis, Minnesota. I heard a couple of questions that were asked up here, and I guess we can go back to the comment about above ground and below ground. And for transmission lines, it's, they're, all of them are above ground. Somebody gave a comment that we have like twenty thousand miles of transmission line in our system, and it's about five miles of it that's buried underground. And as what Mike's, or to what was said earlier, it has to do with reliability. If there's a, if there's a break or an issue with, with the line that's buried underground, it takes a very long time to find that, to find out where that's at. So, by having things above ground, it, it's just much more, it's much more, it's much easier to, to find, find the break, and, and it gets the electricity back in, back in play much quicker.
Other questions for the applicant?
The question was, you're running a high line above a distribution line, and it's just that, I'm just wondering how, how, I realize you got seven, ninety, eighty feet so forth, but I don't know what the lower distribution line is.
The lower, the lower line will probably be about forty-five feet, and I'm, I don't have the drawings in front of me to the exact, but there'll be in that forty to forty-five feet height range. It'll be similar to what they're at right now out there.
So, you're just putting new anchor areas and putting new poles, and you're avoiding the distribution line that's there, but maybe in the same right-of-way?
The distribution lines are going to be put onto our poles.
The distribution lines are going to be put on the poles?
Yeah.
That was never clear.
Yeah.
Thank you. That's all I need.
I had one question as well. You know, the purpose of that substation, as I understand it, was to add reliability and some resiliency to the system as a whole. This transmission line is one wire in, one wire out. Is there another set of transmission lines planned for the substation?
Not at this time, no. And our, our engineers look at that, I'm not the engineer, some of our engineers look at those issues, and we're required to have some, first, if there's a certain length of line, there's, there's requirements for having another way into it.
Okay.
This is not, this is not the case, this is my understanding anyway.
Anything else? Okay, thank you. This is a public hearing, so at this point, I'd like to open it up at seven seventeen for any additional comment from the public on this item. Seeing none, we'll close the public comment at seven eighteen, and take it back to the commission for discussion. Any thoughts?
Substation's built and needs to be hooked up and used. There's nothing to discuss.
Right. Well, really, the key for us, in my mind, is, does it meet the requirements of a conditional use permit? And it, in my reading of this, it does, so...
I agree.
And I think with moving the transmission lines that are out there up onto it is going to make the place a lot tidier and not a lot nicer.
All right, could I have a motion to approve then?
I move the motion to approve the condition use permit in order to construct the hundred and fifteen kilowatt, kilo volt transmission line in the Northern Industrial Park, subject to the following conditions, one, three.
Motion by Commissioner Kelly, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Dahlke. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. On to item number eight, public hearing to approve the preliminary plat, preliminary site and building plan and zoning ordinance amendment for the Aldi, Chipotle, Starbucks, and Hazelton Plaza, Planning Commission, twenty eighteen dash oh three.
Thank you, members of the planning commission again. We're looking at a preliminary site and building plan, a preliminary plat, and a zoning ordinance amendment for the Aldi, Chipotle, and Starbucks proposal in Hazelton Plaza. So, the site is on the northwest corner of the Hazelton Plaza development, so kind of kitty corner to the Coles Building. So, in terms of the background and conditions that are present out there, so in January of this year, you approved the concept plan for this development, or for this proposal. So, we're looking at a almost three and a half acre site. Right now, it's currently vacant, fairly flat. There are a couple retaining walls that exist on the property for the preservation of the four significant oak trees. There is a private drive that runs kind of north to south within the development to provide access to these lots within the development. It's currently zoned and planned commercial development, and will continue to remain that zoning district. So, specifically, the preliminary site and building plan approval is for the Aldi, Chipotle, and Starbucks buildings and sites. The preliminary plat will be for the lot to be platted into three lots, each lot for each of the establishments proposed. And then the zoning ordinance amendment will be to PCD fifteen, so we're going to be changing the building coverage from seventeen to twenty-five percent, which is also consistent with what we've done in Chaska Commons and Super Target. So, really, this change is nothing new that we've seen before. And then it will also incorporate the new establishments that are proposed in this development. So, this is the proposed site plan. So, if you remember the concept plan, it's really consistent with what you saw during that time. There's an Aldi building totaling at twenty-three thousand square feet in size, Chipotle roughly twenty-three hundred square feet, and then Starbucks roughly twenty-two hundred square feet in size with the drive-through component wrapping around it. We did ask the applicant to provide a drive-through analysis as a part of the submittal to give us an understanding of how this drive-through compares to other existing Starbucks, and it was basically concluded in there that they need roughly seven queuing, or seven vehicles to queue within a drive-through to operate ideally or preferred. And for this drive-through in particular, they're offering eight vehicles to queue, so it's going to be providing more than what they typically prefer. The parking lot will be a shared parking lot between all three establishments. They also provided a parking summary for the submittal, which basically provided some raw numbers on their peak time hours for these three different establishments. And for that, it concluded that the three sites will operate harmoniously. In addition to that, they did provide us with a reciprocal easement agreement that is over the Coles parking lot, so that gives them allowance to park in the Coles parking lot if needed. So, with all of that information in place, staff can conclude that the parking proposed out there is a sufficient amount for these uses. There's a couple outdoor patios that are proposed, one for Starbucks, basically in the front of their building, and then one for Chipotle. So, when we went through concept plan approval, they had it basically kitty corner to the building and the parking lot, and we advised them to look at a more suitable location and towards the mature oak trees back there. So, they have since relocated that patio to the north side of the site to really take advantage of that shade cover. We also provided some comments related to pedestrian connections for their overall site. They have incorporated all of the comments provided by staff during the concept approval process, so there is a connection shown on the west side that will connect into the Highway forty-one pedestrian trail, and then connect into the interior system within the site. We also mentioned a central pedestrian connection in between both the north and south sides, and they're showing a pedestrian connection there that'll be designed to show clear indication of where pedestrians can go. They've also included a pedestrian connection on the east side that we recommended to them to basically carry through into the Starbucks site. They're also showing one to connect into the existing pedestrian connection system that you'll see in Hazelton Plaza today, and the sidewalk will continue through on that eastern side. Another item that came up during the concept plan approval was the orientation of the buildings on the site, and looking at other options or alternatives that might exist for the site. At that time, they told us that due to restrictions from Coles, as well as providing view sheds for the Coles sign and Aldi sign, and some soil correction areas on the northwest, that the layout of the buildings that you see today, and that was proposed during the concept, was basically the ultimate design and layout that they concluded on that met all of the objectives of the site, of what Coles wanted, what Aldi's wanted in terms of view sheds. And so, what you see tonight is a conclusion of that. So, they did provide us with an exhibit that kind of shows kind of the objectives that they have to maintain or uphold with the layout of the site, so this just kind of puts it in physical form for you in terms of understanding their conclusion. The landscape plan, so during the concept plan, we did advise them to show landscaping near the loading dock wall, and they're showing some. We've just highlighted some areas where some enhancements or improvements can, can occur on-site. So, we're asking for some evergreens or coniferous trees to be planted, intermixed with the, those deciduous trees on the west side there. We've denoted a couple planting islands that need trees in them in order to satisfy our planting island requirement. And then there's a couple areas on the site that we've kind of highlighted for them to look at additional enhancement. They do meet our landscape ordinance, but in terms of balancing the site and providing that landscape mixture for the site, we've highlighted those areas to look at further. This is Aldi's building. So, in terms of the material composition, it's mainly composed of brick of three different colors, and the color selected were very intentional in terms of fitting in with the Hazelton Plaza development, but also providing a tie-in to Chaska. So, they are proposing to incorporate a Chaska brick color as one of the colors, and then the two other kind of red-tone colors that are provided on the building will match up with what you see on the existing monument signs out there. So, Aldi's is doing this, as well as Chipotle and Starbucks, so they're all utilizing the same material composition to show that cohesiveness together. We also asked Aldi's to give us a cross-section of the loading dock, how it compares to Highway forty-one, as well as the adjacent public trail. So, they provided a couple sections to give us an understanding of how that compares, and basically, the kind of grade that you see in between the highway and the loading dock will provide some good screening. dock will provide some good screening for that loading dock wall and really minimize it. And they've also provided some photo simulations, kind of understanding how you would see this loading dock wall from Highway forty-one, so they provided both the north and south directions to give you an understanding of how that looks. So as you can see, it's pretty minimal from what you can see from the road. But again, added with kind of the landscaping and more evergreen trees would really basically hide that element from public view. This is Chipotle's exterior design. Again, you'll see kind of the same color, format, and material composition present from the Aldi's building. I think the only thing we had to mention was looking at this wall in particular, the front facade wall, so looking at how maybe they can break up this massing just a little bit more and maybe provide for additional transparency on that facade to really open it up to the inside of the development. This is Starbucks' design, and again, you'll see the exact same material composition on So in terms of what we've evaluated, the use does meet the permitted uses in the zoning district. One of the intentions of that district is to provide for a pedestrian-friendly lifestyle center, retail center, and with the connections that they've added for the pedestrians, we feel that they are meeting that intent out there. They also made the revisions to show how the buildings would fit in with each other, as well as within Chaska. And then in terms of the parking, they've been able to supply us with information to indicate that the parking will work. So with that, we are asking you to make a motion to recommend approval of the preliminary site and building plan, the preliminary plat, and the zoning ordinance amendment for Aldi, Chipotle, and Starbucks in Hazeltine Plaza, subject to those conditions in the staff report. I'm happy to answer any questions, otherwise the applicants are also here to answer questions for you.
Questions for staff?
It's probably our error, or my error, because one of our persons that talked about this at the concept was extremely worried about the entrance to McDonald's and their entrance, and they thought there could be confusion. And this one is the only one that we have a picture of where the two entrances are, and the McDonald's exit. Her bringing that up reminded me of different times we had conversations at the confusion or the conflict at Cub and Home Depot and so forth. It was the same type of thing. It's a private interior road that if we don't get it right now, it isn't going to change. And I just, I understand that this is like a one-lane, and all of a sudden you have all these cars turning into McDonald's, which was happening at eleven-thirty this morning when I came up there. And I just find that connection right there is going to be tight, or there's going to be some confusion, because they're basically opposite of each other. That's my question.
And you're referring to the south?
Yep.
Connection here?
Right there.
And your main concern is?
Is that you have cars coming in, turning left in a series at certain time of the days, and you're going to be having cars turning the other way, and then you've got the backup of the cars that don't want to go either way. I just, I just find this is awkward. But when we did the traffic studies, it was basically coming into this section. I mean, it was not dealing with traffic within the area.
Mm-hmm.
I just, maybe a traffic person could say that there's going to be absolutely no trouble, or whatever, but it's just, it's an in-and-out road. It is not a left-turn space, and it's tight.
Mm-hmm. I understand your comment, and I think that's something that our engineers can at least look at a little bit further as we go into final submittal and see if there's any underlying issues with that intersection, how it's proposed there, and if there's any type of mitigation efforts or ways to make that intersection more clear is something that we can look into further.
Other questions for Liz? Okay, at this time, I'd like to invite the applicant up to address the commission, if they would like to.
Good evening. I'm Kathy Anderson, president of Architectural Consortium, and have a very, very long history with retail in Chaska. I thought I would just maybe answer my take. I have thirty-five years of designing a large majority of retail in the Midwest, and I think this is, compared to many shopping centers, a great setup. We have the entrances aligned, you know, they're not offset, and what's unique about this and great for traffic is that you've got a good chunk of stacking, a couple hundred feet, once you get into the site before you enter into McDonald's. And I think that's going to bode well for helping navigate through this, as opposed to so many centers, you immediately drive right in, and you have, you're congested with parking. I also think it's great that we're able to align the McDonald's and the Starbucks entrance as well. So I'm very confident that this is a much safer situation and easier to navigate than many other retail situations. And the other thing with retail is you don't want just huge thoroughfares. You want people to slow down, there's pedestrians there, and some of those, you know, things coming together work towards the advantage of having people paying attention. And I'm here to answer any other questions. I do have a material board, which was suggested, that I could offer. So this is, we had photos submitted, but as you can see, there's the multiple brick colors, including the Chaska brick, several Eiffel colors, and matching stone to the other buildings. And a unique new introduction is this composite panel, which has sort of a wood look, and what I like about the architecture of Hazeltine Plaza is each building, such as Kohl's, was able to incorporate that beautiful glazed tile. McDonald's was able to incorporate their signature stone, and yet fit in with all of the rest of these buildings. And I think this new addition will just be that one more identity for the buildings, yet fitting in.
I have a question for you about the two trash enclosures shown on the site plan. What will those look like? Because they are both kind of in prominent areas where they'll be very visible. Can you tell us a little bit about that?
We do have pictures. Elevation.
I have an exhibit I can bring up.
Yes, it's matching materials to the buildings.
Okay.
And they're gated.
So they're going to be using two of the brick colors that are proposed on the building, so it's meant to fit in.
To blend in, yeah. I just wanted to make sure it wasn't a fence or something that wouldn't look great.
That's all I can.
Other questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you. Again, this is a public hearing, so I'd like to open it up for public input at seven-thirty-eight, if there's anyone who would like to address the commission on this project. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing at seven-thirty-nine and take it back to the commission for discussion. Any comments? Commissioner Cross wanted to break this into chunks?
I wanted to break it into chunks, but it appears as the way it's presented, and she did a very nice job on having all the parts there. At this time, I would think with the season beginning, it would be not nice to break it into chunks, but I really don't like three items, even though it's all shared parking lot. I really don't like three non-related items coming together under one motion. So I won't vote for this, but there's enough other people that will agree.
And I think I would agree with that as well, particularly when the items are not alike, like we saw with the apartment and the restaurant concept previously, where they're really completely different uses, they're just neighbors. Here we have three retail that are using the same materials and shared parking and the same landscape plan, so that's, there's enough commonality there that that kind of makes sense, but still, it's cleaner, because they do have different issues. You know, the Aldi's doesn't have the parking issues that the Starbucks does, and the traffic issues, and rather, so that's, it's nice to kind of deal with those in a concise way, so. Other comments?
I do have a comment in regards to the parking, and this is coming from an observation that I'm having when I go down to Papa Murphy's at the bottom of the hill in the morning at around ten, eleven o'clock. There's a lot of people that are in the, I don't know if it's a caribou or whatever in there right now, and there is absolutely no place to park. You can't even get in to get your pizza. So you have to park clear around the other side where, what is it?
Napa.
Napa is at, and it's just, it's very, very frustrating as a customer. And so I'm wondering, what's the capacity of each of these areas, you know, for people sitting inside, you know, visiting, that type of thing? And, you know, I'm just guessing that that's what's happening at the bottom of the hill as well with caribou. So I see there's a lot of parking on the other side, you know, where McDonald's is at, and people could walk across and park, but I'm also thinking about Aldi and, you know, their customers, and are they going to have enough parking for people that want to park there? And it's not going to be eaten up with a lot of people that are just in there doing business or whatever, you know, and there's a need for both, right? So I'm just, is there enough parking there?
Well, I think with the shared parking.
It's in here.
Okay.
Absolutely. Looks like it's more than ample.
I can, you know, just generally answer that, but yeah, you know, with the parking summary that they provided, as well as the numbers that our code requires for these types of establishments, we did conclude that there is enough parking. You know, I think the unique thing about this site, as well as the fact that they do have the Kohl's parking lot to the south of them and east of them, if they needed overflow parking, they have it there, and they're allowed to park there. So from a staff's point of view, we definitely feel like there is enough parking for all three uses.
Is there something that?
Certainly, come on up.
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, my name is Trent Mayberry. I met you all about a month ago, I believe, and good to be back. One comment that I think is very important is that Aldi, who we actually have a representative from tonight, two representatives, Starbucks and Chipotle have been doing this for a very long time. They care about parking more than all of us combined. They would not do this deal. I've done enough deals with them to know they would not do this if they thought they had one concern about not having enough parking. And the benefit here is that they feel like they have enough parking in the shopping center itself, but then if there's ever an issue, there's spillover per the REA, and then combined with the fact that Chipotle is mainly busy at lunch and dinner, Starbucks is mainly busy in the morning, Aldi's a little bit scattered throughout the day, and if you look at the site plan, the way that we've designed it, Chipotle's entrance is a little split from Starbucks, so it's forcing people to come in and disperse to get to the front doors of all the establishments. And I think a lot of thought's been put into it, and I think we can all rest easy knowing that all three of these professional organizations, when, they just don't make mistakes like that typically. That'd be my only two cents on that.
Thank you. One other question in relationship to this. Is there something predominant that would have a crosswalk from people that would want to walk from Aldi's because they got dropped off here, and the other one wants to run over to Kohl's, or whatever the case may be? Is there, is there going to be a significant signage or something that protects people, bringing a little bit more awareness on how busy that road is?
There's already items in the drive aisle that delineate pedestrian crosswalks over to Kohl's, and so that is already on the site itself.
Okay, so I'm just, I was just looking for the graphic in there a little bit more, so, thank you.
Try to bring it up, too.
For the multitasking families, so it's all.
Yeah, you can faintly see it on this, but there is basically different colored concrete that intersects that private drive to delineate that.
So it's real obvious. Okay, thank you, Liz.
Any other comments here? I would just comment that our big, one of our big concerns in our first look at this was the stacking, and we didn't want stacking out into that private road, and it looks like that's been addressed, so I'm glad to see that, so.
Is that what this was about? I'm not understanding.
No, that's sightlines relative to signs.
Doing the signs.
And why the buildings are oriented the way they are.
Was that still an issue, or is that, was that addressed?
No, that's, that's why the buildings are oriented the way they are, so.
Okay, I just wanted, I didn't understand, I wasn't privy to that.
I agree. We were concerned about cars stacking out into the road, but if it has capacity for eight cars to be in queue, that's, that's great.
And then the McDonald's, the same, where they got a lot of space there to get in queue, so.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Any other comments? All right, with that, I'm looking for a motion to approve the...
I'll make a motion. I'll motion to recommend the approval of the Aldi, Chipotle, and Starbucks preliminary site and building plan, preliminary plat, zoning ordinance amendment in Hazeltine Plaza, subject to the twenty-five conditions.
Motion by Commissioner Dahlke. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Bowie. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? I want opposed. Motion carries. On to item number nine. Public hearing to approve the preliminary plat and concept plan amendment for Chaska Creek Center, second edition, Planning Commission 2018-08.
We're looking at a preliminary plat and a concept plan amendment request specifically for a medical office building and daycare use in the Chaska Creek Center. So to give you an understanding of where this subject site is located, so it's in the Chaska Creek Center development, specifically off of Angler Boulevard and Highway two-twelve, north of Creek Road, south of Angler Boulevard. This specific site that we're looking at tonight abuts Angler Boulevard on kind of the northern side of this Chaska Creek Center. And then as you can see, kind of the abutting properties is the Clover Ridge Development to the north, and then West Creek Corporate Center to the north as well. to the north, and then West Creek Corporate Center to the north as well. And then we have kind of some farmland sporadically around there as well. So in October of 2013 was when the official concept plan was approved for this site, and that's when the site was broken up into five distinct districts in terms of how it was going to be used. So tonight, we're specifically looking at the professional office low-rise area. That was a part of that concept plan, so we're looking more or less on the west side of that site. So today, there's another medical office building being constructed that went through the process about a year or two ago. So basically, what we're looking at tonight would take up the rest of this professional office low-rise district, that area. So this district was basically defined into certain intents or objectives, and those are listed as one to three-story high structures within this area. It's an area that creates impressionable entrance into the business parks since it abuts Angler Boulevard. There's an overall importance of having people places and high-quality places to gather within this overall business center, and then also having those clearly defined pedestrian connections that are well landscaped. So specifically, what the applicant is requesting tonight is a concept plan amendment to the original concept plan, because we are proposing something a little bit different than what was approved in 2013. So they are proposing the medical office building that was involved on that site, but they're also proposing another lot for a daycare use. In addition to that, they are proposing a little bit different setup for the infrastructure over there in terms of how Chaska Creek Way provides service to the side of the site. If you remember, from the original concept plan, Chaska Creek Way basically intersected with Angler Boulevard, but tonight, from the traffic analysis that was done, the conclusion was to provide a cul-de-sac at the end of this Chaska Creek Way to service this professional office low-rise area, as well as providing future connection into the industrial, corporate industrial site. So with those two big pieces changing, that's why we have them coming back for an amendment to that concept plan. And then the pre-plat, they would like to plat the lot into two different lots for those two uses, to be 1.5 acres in size and 2.4 acres in size. So 1.5 for the daycare use, 2.4 for that other medical office building. So here's the original concept plan with the overlay of the new proposal delineated by the hatch marks, and then a zoomed-in perspective here of how it is basically proposed to be set up. So the daycare site is proposed on the westerly side of that area. That building is proposed to be around 10,000 square feet in side, size. I think what will be true for both this building and the medical office building is something we mentioned with the first medical office building, is that the view sheds into the site are very important since there's high exposure there. So we'll be working with the applicant as they come in for their site plan approvals for these sites to really grasp that intent out there. Specifically for the daycare site, in this concept plan, they are showing that the play areas for the kids are oriented to the Angler Boulevard side, so we'll really need kind of a detail on that area, how it lays out, how you see it from Angler Boulevard as they come in for these site plan approvals. In terms of, in addition to that, something that we've been requiring of these highly exposed play areas is that they be fenced in with a wrought iron and brick pillar type of design, again, just to fit in with the overall building and provide an enhanced view shed of that site. They are providing 46 stalls specifically for that site, which is above and beyond what is required for this type of use. One item of note, and to also stay in line with the intent of this concept plan, is providing those clear pedestrian connections out there, and they are showing sidewalks on the both sides of Chaska Creek Way. There really is no connection that is being shown into the site for the medical office buildings or the daycare. So there really needs to be that point of connection for pedestrians if they were to be utilizing this sidewalk on the south side here to be able to connect into these uses up there. So obviously, that's something that we'll have to work with the applicant as they come in for site plan approval. Another piece that's specific to the daycare use is, any daycare use has a drop-off or pickup function associated with it, and really, we don't see any type of setup like that in their concept plan right now. So we'll really need to understand how that's going to operate, if that's going to be provided, if it is going to be provided, how it can be done efficiently and smoothly on the site for the users. With the medical office building, this is kind of the center of that overall site, so basically sandwiched in between the daycare and the other medical office building that's being constructed today. So basically, this is going to be a mirror image, almost a mirror image of what you see out there today, or what we approved about a year ago. The intent of that design is to basically be a similar floor plan, two stories in height to match the other height, and to be designed consistent with that other medical office building. View sheds will also be important for this site, given its high exposure. Their parking, they're providing 124 parking spaces, which is sufficient for this type of use, and again, capitalizing on the pedestrian connections into the site. And specifically, as we went through with the first medical office building, providing a gathering, a quality gathering space for users of that building to take advantage of. So those will be pieces that we'll get into further detail and analysis during their site plan approvals. So like I indicated before, we did have the applicant provide a traffic analysis with the changes that they're proposing on Chaska Creek Way. So again, they're changing it to be a stub street versus a street that goes out to Angler Boulevard. And that new proposal was analyzed as a part of this traffic analysis, and the conclusion on that was that it would work, given that certain access points were proposed and maintained and worked efficiently with both the medical office building site and the future industrial site. So it did come to a conclusion that it will work as long as those parameters in the analysis are met. So in terms of the overall look that's intended for these buildings, so I'm showing both the look for the daycare and the medical office building. So again, this is just like a mirror image of what you see to the east of the proposed medical office building. It'll be a very similar design to that. And then with the daycare, so Ladybug Daycare will be the proposed user of this daycare, and they do have existing facilities in the metro area. There's one in Shakopee and there's one in Waconia, and they've provided us a rendering of kind of the intended look out there. And I think, as stated before, design of these buildings will be very important, given their high exposure, so really capitalizing on where they can provide variation in the massing and materials to really break up those kind of linear walls is what would be encouraged for these buildings. And also the fact that they should fit into Chaska in terms of their overall design. So to kind of recap and what they'll have to work on as they come forward with more detailed applications and requests, so when they come forward for preliminary and final site plan, they will have to provide consistency with the pedestrian connections and gathering spaces that we've mentioned, talking about the drop-off and pickup function at the daycare center and how that's going to operate efficiently and smoothly. Taking advantage of the view sheds that they have along Angler Boulevard and really designing the buildings and landscaping as well to provide those enhanced view sheds, and then designing those buildings to show consistency, not only with the development that they're in and with their overall identity, but also to tie in with Chaska. So in conclusion, we are recommending approval of this concept plan amendment and preliminary plat, subject to the conditions that are listed in your staff report. I'm happy to answer any questions for you.
Okay.
And the applicant is here as well.
Any questions for Liz?
Liz, is this the same number of parking stalls as the other medical building that was approved last year?
It's roughly around the same number, yes.
Okay.
It might vary by a couple stalls.
Okay.
Oh Liz, I do have a couple of questions in regards to the configuration and layout of the building and the playground areas. Has, was there other options of flipping the building around to be able to protect the playground a little bit more from people walking by on the sidewalk, maybe, you know, just based on a lot of things going on in our culture today? Just curious.
I haven't seen any other layout options for this site. Dave might be able to say whether or not they've explored more options.
Just simply from a safety factor, that's all I'm just trying to, trying to get to.
Approximately how high is that wall that they've got on the west side to get a flat playground surface?
Over here, on the edge here?
Yes.
What would you say, Dave? Because it definitely varies.
Ultimately, it'll be four feet or less.
Four feet or, four feet or less, so that people can hear.
There might not be any wall. It's all a function of what's the final grading as the site to the west.
This grading that's here is from the other road that came in, is that one reason why we have such a grading pattern there? Is it just from that concept plan?
Right, the reason...
Dave Pecorni, Community Asset Development Group. The existing grading plan that you see is basically the existing grading that's out there, and the outlot, the industrial corporate site to the west, hasn't been graded because that's the, basically, that's all the dirt from Hy-Vee goes over there. So when, if you look at the ultimate grading plan, we've done one, but I can't even tell you that's exactly, because I don't know exactly what the parking configuration will be on the adjacent industrial. But our worst case is four feet.
Thank you. I do have a question for the daycare people if they're here.
Okay, yeah, I guess I'd like to open it up, open it up to applicant at this point, if they'd like to present, so. Dave?
Dave Pecorni again. First, let me say there, I think there are two significant changes that have occurred prior to actually our submitting the plan here, and really is what precipitated the change in the concept. The first is, as we worked with MSP Commercial on the initial medical building, part of their vision was to do a two-story building. They wanted it to be about 30,000 square feet, and if you went back to the concept plan that Liz was sharing with you, the original concept, and we actually had two original concepts, the low-density and the high-density plan. Under the low-density plan, it was two 30,000 square foot, one-level buildings. And so then when Alex Building came in, that went to a two-level building and actually freed up more of a footprint. The second thing that happened with our Chaska Way design that showed going out to Angler, it did connect to Angler, but it was a right-in, right-out, and it had, I'll put this nicely, a minimal support from the county engineer. They really didn't like the concept of a right-in, right-out that was that close to the full interchange going into the data center, whatever the name of the street is on the north. So as we started reworking the plan, we concluded, one, we weren't going to get a road right-in, right-out, and the footprint that was left over from what MSP Commercial bought actually was larger for two reasons, because of the right-of-way for the planned road and because the footprint in the parcel that was originally acquired was smaller than the original plan. So that's why we're able to fit both uses. We, we do have a purchase agreement to sell the daycare. I do not anticipate that they will actually build until either this fall or next spring, I mean, spring of '19. But we want to get through and get the plat done. They want to actually buy that lot. But we'd like to complete the cul-de-sac work this summer. If you've been out there, what is the North-South Road called now?
Chaska Creek Boulevard.
Chaska Creek Boulevard. I'm so old, I call it Clover, Cloverfield Drive, but class, yeah. Well, that road is under construction. We've built it down about the first 800 feet, and there's kind of a dead-end road that goes into the MSP Commercial. What we want to do is, this spring, when they finish up that work, they will just extend the road, build the cul-de-sac, and by the summer, those public improvements will all be done. We are actively out marketing the medical office site, and I can't guarantee it's going to be a medical office. Basically, under the first one, we had an agreement with MSP Commercial that they would have an option to buy it, but they were really the marketer. And that went very well. They will open here in the next month. The building is basically full, and so they're out actually now marketing the second site, and we have a, an understanding on how they would buy it. I don't anticipate that that'll happen this summer, given that they don't have a high level of interest at this point, but I'm pretty optimistic that you'll see something happening next summer. And I also expect that you'll see in the next 12 months, a fair amount of activity in the whole corporate center. We are getting a pretty good level of interest. What we're finding is that if you are interested in a large corporate center, 10 acres or more, and you want to be in the southwest metro, there aren't any sites except these. So we've made the decision, at least at this point, that we are not going to subdivide the parcels any further. We're going to keep them in the large lots. This lot A, which would be the one to the west, will be, it's actually, it says it's 10 acres. From a development standpoint, it's actually quite a bit more, because you could come in and buy that parcel, not have to deal with ponds and open space and the other wetlands, because we've dealt with all of that. So from a marketing standpoint, it's really comparable to like a 15-acre parcel, and that's why we're getting some interest from those larger users. The last comment on the daycare, and I'm not an expert on the daycare, and they are fully aware they need to come back for their own detailed site plan, but there are a couple things that are, that are important to daycares. And to be honest, parking is down the line a little. It's not a critical thing to them, because people that use their facility don't park very long. very long. What is important, though, is the way the kids and parents are, kids are dropped off, parents pick them up. What they, what they prefer, and it's really from a safety standpoint, is a parking lot drop-off, not a drop-off like we would have with the medical office. So in the concept, and it may not be the final site plan, but there's a small area to drop off. There's like a curb that comes out to the drive. You could drop somebody off there. But primarily, parents will use the parking spaces that are in front of the building. That's where they will park in the morning and the afternoon. And since you don't have a lot of, quote, "customers" coming into the daycare during the day, except for employees, the daycare manager needs then to focus to say, those parking spaces in the front are not for employees. And that's what they all do. This is actually not in Chaska, but we've developed three other daycares now, and I can tell you, they all want this design. The second thing that's important to them is how the park, the playground area will function relative to the classrooms. So all daycares really have, are two different elements, the older kids and the young kids. They want to keep their playground separate, and they want to be able to have all, nearly all of the classrooms being able to access directly out to the playground rather than getting around. So they like this idea of two and potentially even three sides of the building being covered by a daycare. Relative to that, the other thing they like is the visibility. So they like the fact that it'll be visible from Angler, and they will be very conscious of having a very nice view. They will not have a back of their building facing Angler, because that's their marketing. So I think it'll fit really nice in the site. They don't need, you know, great access. It's not like where they, it's not like a Starbucks where they have a, that kind of drive-up and visibility. But they like the visibility right on what will become a major road. Actually, it's become, there's actually more traffic today on Angler than there is on Pioneer Trail west of Highway 41, which actually surprised me when I saw that number.
Dave, the reason why I asked if there was a daycare people here, because I wanted to know hours of operations and if they have preschool and post-school and have run a little bus, because that is the one area of drop-off and pickup that I concern. I'm not concerned about having the parents drop the kids off, because I see the tie-up at the community center, because the kids have to be brought in, and it's 10 minutes, 20 minutes sometimes to get them in and squared away, and the car is blocking traffic. So I'm all for the way the parking is, except I want to know if there's preschool or post-school.
So, and you want to know what time they start it?
Yeah.
So the answer, I think, to those two is yes. They will have, they will open, and I can't tell you exactly. Here's what typically daycares are in, that 5:30 to 6:00, and they're open till 5:30 or 6:00, okay? And do they have a bus? Yes. And do they have bus drop-offs? Yes. So that's the, that's the purpose of that sidewalk drop-off area in front. But when, and again, this is the kind of detail that probably is not appropriate for the concept plan, but what that type of drop-off is going to occur is that when a bus is there, it will be, it'll block one lane. So won't be a kind of a pull-off, drop-off area. But that's a, those are really occurring not at the peak times for daycare. They're the off-peak when the buses are there.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant? This is a public hearing, so at this point, I will open it up to the public at 8:13. If anyone has a comment, please approach. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing at 8:14 and take it back to the commission for discussion. Any comments?
I think that, you know, since we're at the concept phase, I like what, what they've presented so far, and I'm confident on moving it forward. I think the daycare in this type of park is, is a really good idea.
I think, I think it's a great idea as well. So the type of buses, I just wanted to understand, is that these small little buses that are kind of more of a commuter bus that maybe have 15, 20 kids on them, so they can get through the parking lot pretty, pretty easy here? Okay, that was, that was a question I was having.
I guess I would second what Commissioner Dahlke said. Great use for the site. I will, two other comments, I guess. One is, I do think the play area and the building orientation feels awkward, and I understand that's being worked on. And I look forward to seeing what's, what's done differently there, because I think there's, there's more opportunity there. And I guess I would-
I think what comment about that, and this is for the next time around when you're dealing with the-
Yeah.
One of the challenges, we're going to have the site lineup, but on the west side of the building, maybe take a step back. One of the challenges in this whole, we're all 80 acres, it is a really good farm. Not the best of soils for some of the other stuff. So we have a lot of black dirt. That's, once we get rid of the black dirt, it's great material. But what, on the west side of the daycare, where the original road is, as the material was being moved around in bad soils and stuff, that whole edge is a really bad soil area. It's great for playgrounds, but it's, you couldn't park on it. Couldn't put a building on it. So we can't move the building any further to the west and still have soils. We have corrected soils on every, for these two sites, they're fully corrected now. So there's no additional grading, no additional soil correcting that has to be done there. Unless we move to west of where the, it's like the westerly 50 feet. But that was done intentionally so that it could be the playground area.
The other comment I would make is, I'd like to reiterate, I guess, staff's concern about the drop-off and pickup safety, that's an area of deep concern for this type of use, I think, for all of us in the planning commission. So we're anxious to see that improved as well. So that's something we'll be looking for at the next phase.
Yes, sir.
Any other comments? Okay, with that, I look for a motion to approve.
I can make that motion for, to the city council approval of a preliminary plat and concept plan amendment to, for the medical office building and daycare, subject to the following more than 20, oh, 21 conditions.
Okay, motion by Commissioner Cross. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Dahlke. Any further discussion?
Was there going to be something else, a condition added in there from a safety issue?
That's in there already.
That is a doubt.
Number 11.
Number 11. Yep. Sorry you missed that.
Okay, I'll have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Onto item number 10, the final plat for Bavaria Vista, town in Mary Stapleton, Planning Commission 2018-05.
We're looking at a final plat request for the Bavaria Vista development, specifically located off of 3190 High Point Drive. So here's an aerial indicating where the site is located. So it's on the west side of Bavaria Road. The site itself is located just on Lake Bavaria, off of a private drive known as High Point So in terms of the background of this project, in November, well, specifically November 21st, 2016, this proposal came through city council and planning commission for concept plan into variance request to make the lot size smaller. At that time, the city council did deny the variance request and did advise staff to work with the applicant to figure out a workable plan without approving a variance request. So in August of 2017 is when we came back with the applicant's proposal with a preliminary plat and rezoning. The rezoning basically rezoned the site to a PRD district, which basically looked at the minimum lot sizes out there to fit in with the existing three lots that are still out there. And when I say three lots, I'm referring to the Unger site to the south of Stapleton's, the Stapleton's five-acre, five-acre lot, and then the McLennan's just to the north of them. These were remnant lots, kind of leftover from the Jonathan days, and basically were all rezoned to be an appropriate zoning district for them. So specific to the Stapleton site, it's comprised of 5.01 acres. City sewer and water was added to High Point Drive only a couple of years ago, so this site is connected to city utilities. There are wooded steep slopes on the site, specifically on the western side, between basically the house as it sits today and the lake. And then, as denoted before, when they came through their preliminary, history showed that this site was supposed to be three separate lots at one point. So it's basically reverting it back to that original plan. So like I said, when they went through rezoning, they were rezoned to a planned residential district, specifically PRD 70. So that's the current zoning that's existing on this lot. The intent of this zoning district was, again, recognizing that these are some of the oldest existing lots in Chaska, and therefore they had very unique layouts, as well as varying acreages between those three lots. So the intent that they had before, when they were a PRD RLS zoning district, carried through to this PRD district with the intent to preserve the quality of the lake by limiting the size of the lots that occur on Lake Bavaria, so on a large lot basis. So when they went through PRD 70, basically the only change that was considered during that time was to reduce the minimum lot size to 1.25 acres, which was consistent with kind of the smallest lot that was existing there. The request again tonight is for a final plat approval. So it'd be converting the Stapleton lot from one lot into three lots. And again, it just kind of reverts it back to its original intent out there. So in terms of kind of the breakdown of these three different lots, the northernmost lot is Lot 1, 1.42 acres in size. It's basically got a flat, open area, good for building on. There's wooded steep slope on the western edge. And then with Lot 2, would encompass the existing Stapleton home on that one. So that one's just a little bit larger than the northern lot at 1.59 acres. They also have wooded steep slopes on their western edge. And then Lot 3 is the biggest lot and the most unique lot in terms of layout. It's 2.01 acres in size. Witted steep slope does basically dissect the site. There is an existing detached garage on the site, specifically this one, but that will be demolished as a part of this request. Another item of note for this request, and hence kind of the reason why it's not on the consent agenda tonight, typically we see final plats on the consent agenda, but given kind of the history of this proposal with planning commission and where we've come since city council of their preliminary, we wanted to make sure we gave you, or brought you up to speed in terms of where this is at and kind of the different moving parts of this request. So when they went to city council for their preliminary and rezoning, their neighbor, Tim McLennan, also provided a request to the city council, looking at reducing the minimum lot size even further, the street frontage even further, and the lake frontage even further. And this was based on kind of his desire to also subdivide his property. So specifically, he was requesting that the minimum lot size be one acre in size versus 1.25 acres. The minimum street frontage would be 50 feet versus 100 feet. And then the minimum lake frontage would be 125 feet versus 150 feet, where it is today. So at that time, city council did advise staff to look into his request a little further in terms of how it would affect other lots in the nearby vicinity. So we did put together an exhibit that was provided in your packet tonight, just to give you an understanding of, with these reductions that are requested, what other properties would be able to subdivide under those same parameters. So in total, 14 properties, kind of in the general vicinity along Lake Bavaria, would be eligible to subdivide. And it, you know, one of the properties that's not within that total is the McLennan lot. And under those new parameters set forth, they wouldn't be able to meet even the street frontage requirement. So the 14 total lots are the ones that are starred on this exhibit. So again, city council just wanted to get an understanding of, you know, if we were to look into this request, what would its impact be on these other properties in the So I think in terms of our analysis that we provided, and not something that you are going to make a motion on or provide a recommendation on, we just wanted to keep you informed of kind of where things are at in the process here. And city council will basically be the ones to kind of evaluate this information and make a decision on it. But in terms of how these two pieces connect and keeping you up to speed with the history of this proposal, we just wanted to make you guys aware of kind of what's being brought forth to city council next Monday. So again, we're not asking you to make any type of recommendation or motion. On this specific request, we are specifically looking at a final plat request and recommendation tonight. Again, it's just to keep you up to speed and give you the history of what's going on for this area. So based on what the Stapletons are proposing in terms of their final plat request, they do meet the requirements out there. We have not seen any issues on staff's part to say that this proposal should be not approved. So we are asking you to make a motion to recommend approval to city council of the final plat for Bavaria Vista, based on the conditions that are listed in the staff report. I am happy to answer any questions, otherwise the applicants are here tonight as well.
Any questions for Liz?
Question. In regards to, you know, the constraints that you've done with some of the property here, and it looks like you guys have been working very hard to be able to make this happen. I understand that. So obviously, at some point, somebody's going to want to put a house on there, right? What does that do to them with the setbacks and the wooded lots and all that type of stuff? Does that really put a lot of constraints in that, in that area at the top? Don't know.
Well, they'll be meeting their, I mean, they're showing some conceptual building pads on this site plan. So they've shown how they can meet the setbacks out there while still providing a sufficient amount for a building pad.
So they are considering, yeah.
Yes.
Okay, that's what I wanted to ask.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
This is on a private gravel road. I'm wondering, is it an agreement between all property owners to maintain- property owners to maintain that road and what will happen to the road if concrete trucks come up the hill and so forth? I'm just wondering.
Yes, so it is a private road, so it is owned and maintained by the residents out there. In terms of what's going to happen with the concrete trucks, there will obviously have to be some notification process provided to the residents out there in terms of, you know, what that's going to do to the traffic and the maintenance of the road, yes.
That's, that's basically what I wanted to know. With approval of this, now it is a plat, not a building permit or anything.
Right.
On the Lot 3, they've got a proposed driveway going through what we've always considered a 18% no-construction type grade. Are we giving them hope that we would have, that a building permit would be given to them with the proposed driveway the way it is, or what?
We'll obviously have to look at that when they come in for a building permit, but the driveway basically cannot encroach into the wooded steep slope delineation and basically the 30-foot no-grade, no-mow delineation or setback around that. So they, when looking at the plan, there is space in between those two parameters that they have to meet to put a driveway through that. But obviously, they need to show on their building permit application how they're going to be able to bring a driveway through there without encroaching into those, into the trees or 30-foot no-grade, no-mow.
I just wanted to make sure that this is just a plat.
Mm-hmm.
Right, thank you.
Yep.
Other questions for Liz? Okay, if the applicant would like to approach, they certainly
Good evening. I'm John Stapleton, and John and Mary are the applicants. When, when we appeared before the City Council, something very interesting happened, and I would like to share it with you because it changed the discussion rather abruptly. The property that we're on now is property of a meets and bounds description. It is not currently platted property. The other examples that were highlighted of potential splits of property are platted properties, and that engages a different set of decisions. But when the mayor heard that said, he said, there was no discussion that we, then the discussion was, let's come to a minimum size of a lot and understand how to put a relationship of these pieces of property together based on that. So I don't think we did the benefit to your meeting last of pointing that out. So tonight, I'd like to do that. And the, and the second issue that I'm aware of is, we've had prospective sites analyzed for the grade, and we have stayed under the 18% grade issue for a driveway, et cetera. There is a current driveway in there now that goes down to the lake, and we've adjusted the lot line from what was, had been proposed 30-some, 40 years ago to accommodate the hill so that it doesn't, it doesn't force you into a steep grade. Finally, we have, over the years, we've been there, done a lot of arbor work. As a matter of fact, I have an arborist coming in now. There are 10 oaks that are in the range of hundreds of years old, and we maintain those every couple of years with trimming, et cetera. And that's literally being done before the end of this month of March. Again, we prize those trees and wouldn't do anything to put them at risk. So that, that is something that Mary and I are committed to because we love the property. Are there any questions I might be able to answer? Good. Well, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, this is not a public hearing, but I'll take it back to the commission at this point, and we're just.
I don't have anything.
I think they, it's been.
Met the requirements.
They put a lot of time into it.
Absolutely.
Right. Yeah, it's a basic plat. It does beat the, it's consistent with other lots around the lake, and it meets the requirements for the zoning district, so.
Mr. Kuport, we do have Tim McGlinen here as well, and I'm sure he wants to address the planning commission.
For additional comment then, sure.
Hi, I'm Tim McGlinen. My wife and I live just to north of John and Mary.
Okay.
And so we're on two, just slightly over two acre lot to the north of them. And, you know, it all started about, yeah, a year ago, over a year ago, when it came to you and the council to subdivide. And that time, you denied the approval. It was based on us being zoned two and a half acre lots. And I assumed at the time that, okay, well, all right, he was denied, and apparently I probably could never split my lot if that's going to be the zoning for our, for our land. Between him, me, and the Ungers are the last undeveloped, unplatted land on either lake in the city of Chaska. And so when I heard that, I thought, well, okay, well, I guess that's kind of a done deal. But I didn't realize that the council had directed planning to then work with them and in order for them to accomplish that lot division. And it wasn't until we talked with John and Mary in May, and they said, yeah, we're working with the city, and they're going to help us, you know, subdivide. And at first, it sounded like it was a planned unit development, which seemed odd to me. But then I talked to Liz, and now it's like, we're doing a planned development district, and we're putting you in new zoning. Well, okay, so this is May-June. This is the first I've heard of this. And we have just recently built a very nice home on our lot, which my wife has grown up on, and it's been in their family for 50 years almost. And so at that time, and then I talked to Liz about, well, this seems very specific that we're going to just one and a quarter acre, and it seems to be fitting just enough for them to do it and make their lots much smaller right next to me, and I just spent a lot of money to build a brand-new home. And we're in an area of large lots. And why can't we modify this slightly to allow me to accomplish that same thing down the road, or at least give me that ability? We have absolutely no plans to do that, but you have to at least keep that as a possibility when land, when you're on a lake, and it's very expensive. And right now, you go from two and a half acres down to one and a quarter acre, allowing them to do the three lots. So this now squeezes a house to the south of us much closer than would have happened. And I know at one point, if it was two and a half acres, you know, I know his house sits right on the middle. I'm not trying to derail this project, but I'm just looking for the same consideration for us in that, right now, it's being done so that they can subdivide and do a lot of things and push homes closer to us. And we purposely kept our house at least 35 to 45 feet from the property line, going to the north and away from them. But now, this home will be much, much closer. I mean, on the plat, when they're showing the pad location, it's 15 feet setback on the garage and 25 feet for a house. So I, you know, there's other, I guess I naively thought, if I came and talked, and I wasn't here to address you folks, I was out of town. Our attorney came and, you know, read his letter. Okay, but I did go to the council meeting then, and I thought if I explained myself that I'm supporting what they want to do, but I would think I would, I could have the same consideration for our land, in fact, in light of what we're allowing, we're not opposing what they're doing, so we're allowing them to do that. It does harm us somewhat because now we do have smaller lots next to us, and that's a big, that's a big deal. So I know there's other developments around the lake, the least, the last one was Chevelle. Now, there's 10 lakeshore lots on in that development. Seven of them are either right at one acre or .95 acres. They're small lots. The reason? They have sewer. And this is one of the things that came up with council when I talked to them last August. Their concern, when I said, okay, if you're allowing one and a quarter, why can't we drop this down to one? And their concern was, well, geez, suddenly everyone on the lake is going to start subdividing. Well, if some people are at one and a quarter, if it's going to be one and a quarter, there are two and a half acre lots or larger in our area around the lake. And I don't know how that would prevent them from doing the same. I'm only asking for the same consideration. The key thing we have in our area, Lake Chevelle, is that we have sewer. Bavarian shores do not have, does not have sewer. I mean, they got big, beautiful homes up there, big lots, but they don't have sewer. I know Kevin has said there is sewer nearby. To me, the likelihood of them all starting to say, we're going, we want to pay for sewer, because ours was expensive enough just to get it 150 feet from a cul-de-sac where it already existed. It was extremely expensive. I can't see Bavarian shores, all 25 people saying, now we suddenly want sewer, we're going to start splitting our lots. So I'm just asking for that same consideration, because in, kind of what has now happened, I was naively thinking that we would be able to do the same. I also naively thought, we, we built our home, it's a two-car attached garage, we were going to build a detached garage, and we were going to move our old garage and set it closer to John's line. And the city approved it, and we got a building permit. John, all they requested was that John sign the survey showing this garage location, because it, one corner, it is now one foot from the property line. I, we're going to move it. I've got $15,000 into a slab, the block walls, the grading work, and I went to pull the permit here a few weeks ago, and I was denied. So now I have a, I'm not able to build my garage, and I've been talking with Liz, we've been going around and around, like, it's been approved, I got a permit, I asked for an assurance when it didn't look like John was, we weren't going to straighten our property line between us. If I can show you a picture, I'll show you how goofy our line is, and maybe you can, you can see it. You can see that red, where it looks like a shark fin that extends up to the north? And that little piece of land is actually basically in our front yard. I don't know if I can show it over, but I'd show you what we have done. So, you know, down, down here is the Stapletons, and here was our proposed garage location. It's one foot away, and it was, it's been approved by everybody, but now I can't build it. So now I'm really in a hardship situation here, because I have to have a, you can't have just a two-car garage, and this garage was to match the architecture of the home. So now, suddenly, with all this being approved, I'm being denied. And then, just this afternoon, Kevin and, I met with Kevin and Matt Ring, or Matt Podrowski, and they were coming up, well, here's one possible solution, since we're going to deny you, was to start doing a land swap. So now, I haven't even talked to John about this, but these are all the things that are, you know, I'm giving up a lot, and I'm just asking for some too. It's the same consideration on our land, but I, I know the council will have to go over the whole, the whole thing on Monday too, I guess, but that's where we're at. Thank you.
That's helpful perspective. Thank you. A question for staff. So what we're being asked to prove tonight is just the plat, but if this issue were to be addressed, it would have to be a separate issue, so.
We'd have to send it and say, we want to deal with this, or we don't want to deal with it.
Yeah.
And that's, I think, what Liz was saying, that we're going based on the existing zoning, what is allowed today, and that's what we have to evaluate the plat under. And the council can take this up and say, we think we should look at it more, we don't think we should look at it. They have to make that decision. They asked for more information, we gave it to them, or we're going to provide that to them with, with this request. And so that's kind of where we're at.
Well, and I think it's, it's fair that that's what happens when you shrink lot sizes, is the value of adjacent lots can change. And I think if we went from one and a quarter to one, we might potentially have that same issue with the next neighbor down the line, so.
Who wants .75.
Yeah, yeah. So, okay, well, I'm happy to defer that question to the City Council. Any further discussion on the Planning Commission relative to the plat?
I don't have anything with the plat, but there might be a recommendation like you suggested, just to the council, to, to suggest that this, this consideration with, with a land swap, or whatever needs to happen to accommodate that.
That's a separate action from this.
Yeah. Yeah, but to ask for them to.
The council will be looking.
Yeah, they're working.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
Good, thank you. Okay, any other comments? Look for a motion to approve the final plat.
I'll make a motion to recommend approval of the final plat of Bavaria Vista, based on the nine conditions.
I'll second it.
A motion by Dahlke, second by Cross. Any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Item number 11, the final plat for Chaska Bluffs in the southwest Chaska area.
Thank you.
Thank you.
How many?
Harvest and the blocks and the, look at that.
Can I ask you a five minutes?
Say, Liz, would it be reasonable to take a, just a quick bio break?
Sure.
Can we do that?
Yep.
All right. Can we just make it about three minutes?
Sure.
All right, thanks.
Okay.
We are still live.
Okay, thank you. Okay.
We are clear.
Okay, we'll call it back to order again and take on item number 11, the final plat for Chaska Bluffs. Liz?
Thank you, members of the Planning Commission. Like Mr. Kuport, so we're looking at a final plat for Chaska Bluffs. So to give you an understanding of where this specific site is located, it is located directly adjacent to the Club West Harvest neighborhood, which is north of County Road 44, on the, basically the west side and south sides of Creek Road. This specific site will be gaining access from the Harvest neighborhood, specifically off of Harrow Cove. So in terms of the approvals that have already been done for this site, in April of 2016, the overall Conca Plan for the Harvest Phase 2 was approved, which also encompassed this area that's being looked at tonight. In December of 2017, the preliminary plat and rezoning was approved, so tonight we're looking at the final application request for this proposal. So the final plat will be for 25 detached villa lots. And here's a site plan showing you how it basically lays out. Again, the 25 lots, there's eight interior lots, and then the rest will be on the perimeter that, about the bluff back there. They'll be approximately 60 feet wide. There'll be approximately 60 feet wide. The units themselves are designed to be all the same in terms of their exterior appearance. They will all have side-loaded garages and their own independent driveways that access these units. There is wooded steep slope on the eastern edge there, that has been delineated and shown on the site plan. It was always indicated to the applicant that these lots need to stay out of that wooded steep slope, as well as out of the 30-foot no grade, no mow, and that's what they're There is a passive park area in between two of the lots that about the bluff, so basically, it'll provide access into the bluff area. The city will be acquiring this piece of property, and will be able to kind of see how that area gets formatted in terms of whether or not there's a bench there, a pathway, that's all yet to be determined. So here's the exterior elevation of the product out there, so again, they're all going to be very similar in appearance. So as it relates to the exterior design, so in January of 2018, we looked at, or reviewed the anti-monotony policy and potential changes to it. When this came in, when this project came in for preliminary, it brought up that question of how it would be treated with the anti-monotony regulations, and how this certain product, which very much operates and looks like a townhome development, but it just happens to be detached, and where there would be exemptions in the anti-monotony code to allow for this type of development. So, with that, we came up with a list of criteria that would need to be provided for in these types of proposals, in order to be exempt from the anti-monotony and design requirements listed within that. So, we came to the conclusion that they need to be same story above grade, same number of stories above grade. The homeowners association would maintain the yards, as well as have restrictions on changing the front exteriors. The front elevations between all the units in a single development provide for similar exterior design, and have at least some of the same components that are specifically listed within that conditions. And then for any development where the units are sharing a driveway, they should have, or they shall have, the same front exterior design and same color application. And then the last piece was that they should be physically separated from other detached single-family developments, basically show that they're their own development. So if we kind of take into consideration that criteria that was laid forth, and what they're proposing tonight, they do meet that criteria, and therefore are exempt from those anti-monotony requirements. Another significant piece of this proposal is the tree preservation of the site, so they, again, about a wooded steep slope area, so there were a lot of significant clusters of trees that were denoted during the initial stages of this development. They have taken into consideration the requirements that were listed during the preliminary, to save additional trees for some of the lots that about the wooded steep slope areas. So all of the trees that were denoted during that time are shown to be saved as a part of this tree preservation plan. The one area specific tonight, and the fact that this project is not on consent agenda, is looking at the significant oak tree that's on Lot 1, Block 2. We did require them to provide a tree analysis and preservation plan from a certified arborist for this final submittal. However, due to the seasons right now, and the recommendations from the arborist that they're using, they would recommend that they do the analysis during the spring, when the roots and other pieces are exposed and easily analyzed. So they have requested that they wait to do that during the spring, recommended by the arborist. So, that's where, basically, our recommendation for you is to provide a direction on how to treat this lot that encompasses the significant oak tree. We want to make sure that you're comfortable moving forward a certain way, in terms of how that lot is treated, without this knowledge on the tree report and preservation plan on it. So, specifically, we've kind of laid out three different conditions that we wanted you to consider in how we treat this lot. I want to make note that we have made a condition of approval, that no grading or erosion control, or any of those methods are to occur on this lot until this tree preservation plan and analysis is provided by the certified arborist, and reviewed and approved by staff. But the ones that we want you to consider tonight, the three options that we want you to consider tonight are listed in your report, but I also want to kind of go over kind of the benefits, or pros and cons, or differences, I should say, between each condition, so you can make a decision effectively. So the first one that we've set forth is that Lot 1, Block 2 would have to be platted as an outlot, therefore making it unbuildable right now, and then subsequently plating it as a buildable lot, after the tree preservation plan by a certified arborist is reviewed and approved by staff. So if you were to go down this route, this would give you the ability to be able to see this lot, again, in front of you guys, and city council and staff. So all three of you, or all three of us, would be able to review it as a part of that route. If we go with the second option, which would be to pursue a drainage and utility easement over the entire area of Lot 1, Block 2, and allow vacation of that easement, once a tree preservation plan is reviewed and approved by staff. If we were to go down that direction, they would only go to city council and be reviewed by staff, to get the easement vacation. The third and final option that we've kind of listed for you would basically be at the end of the spectrum, in terms of everyone who gets to review that. So that would be just pursuing a condition in the resolution of this final plat and development agreement to allow, we wouldn't allow a building permit until Lot 1, Block 2, or the tree preservation plan is reviewed and approved by staff. So if we were to go that route, this would only require staff review of that direction. So, one is allowing everyone to see it again, and make the recommendation on that, or if you're comfortable with just city council and staff reviewing it, then you should pursue the second option, or if you're comfortable with staff overlooking this entirely, then the third option would be the way to go. So that's where we need your direction tonight, and again, why we did not put this on consent agenda, is so that you guys can weigh into kind of the direction that this goes, based on your comfort level. So we are making, or asking you to make a motion to recommend approval of the final plat for Cheska Bluffs, based on the conditions listed in the staff report, with the notion that we would like you to select one of the options for condition number 30, in terms of how to treat Lot 1, Block 2's significant oak tree on the site. I'm happy to answer any questions. Need more clarity on that direction, or whatnot, but otherwise, the applicant is also in the audience for questions.
I guess I'd like to suggest to the commission that we maybe defer discussion of our choice of those three into the, take it back for discussion amongst the commission, and try to address any other issues prior to that, just in the interest of time, so... Any questions for Liz at this point?
Liz, I do have one question. When we first walked through this, this plan initially, there was a discussion surrounding the terminology of townhouse. Did staff grapple with that, or come up with any definitions around that? Curious.
I mean, we didn't really set forth a different definition for a townhome. I think when we went through the anti-monotony piece of things, what we kind of saw as the similarities in a townhome development is basically what was listed in that criteria, in terms of how it was treated. So, you know, these types of units basically all look the same. They're maintained by a homeowners association for their yards, and the overall appearance, where you can't change the exterior. And, yeah. Pertaining to, you know, the overall look of these structures, everything basically is the same and controlled by the homeowners association. So, really, kind of that criteria that we set forth is kind of what we feel is how a townhome development operates and looks.
So it wouldn't be something that would have a common roof, or common walls, or something like that, as part of the...
Not necessarily.
Curious. Okay, that's what I was anticipating that would have, isn't it? I mean, that's, that's what I would think a townhouse would be, but, you know, maybe there's townhouse with an asterisk on it, I don't know.
Yeah, there's just a lot of different housing products that come to be, you know, with these innovative times. So, again, we kind of see this product as very much a detached townhome type of development. So, again, it's, it's kind of by a case-by-case basis that you look at that.
The reason I'm asking is because if this comes up again, which I'm sure it's going to, as we build out the rest of the city, it might be worth a little bit of time of just revisiting and coming up with a really solid definition of that.
Well, we are right. We're proposing to go back to the city council with an ordinance which would make that a definition, right?
Right. I mean, we can look into it in terms of adding that as a part of this ordinance creation, to make a specific definition for a townhome, and...
We, we are going to be codifying the anti-monotony piece. That was a direction from the council, it's just not gotten back to them yet.
Right.
Okay.
So, so that will be a piece that's going to be taken care of, and provided with clarity.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for Liz about this final plat?
I do. Liz, you've talked about the homeowners association, but it isn't here. Is that not the spot for it to have a condition that there is a homeowners...
There will be, for this development. Yep, they will be basically absorbed into the other homeowners association of the Harvest neighborhood.
Okay. Can you just explain to me the order of number 10, prior to final plat, is the environmental thing, is, does that mean...
So any areas that are contaminated in the bluff areas, they would have to provide a remediation effort plan on how that gets addressed, so that there's no further contamination of those sites.
So, it's, that happens fairly early in this process, before they start...
Mm-hmm, right. We've made a, a condition of approval where they need to get that done prior to building on the site.
Thank you, Liz. Would the applicant care to comment?
Dave Parnia with Community Asset Development, and I represent the landowner on this. So again, we're fine with all the conditions. I, I think it's a little ironic, we've gone through the whole process, and we're down to one tree, I think that's really for Commissioner Cross. But, I do want to, so preserving the trees has been a focus of ours. If you look back at our original concept, one of the, I'd say really, the key feedback that we had from the staff in our original concept was, as we laid that concept on top of the tree survey, we found there was this cluster of trees that were really coming down, and if we could, in essence, lose one of the lots, we could preserve those. And that we did. And we were actually, I think in the long term, that's going to be a win, win for both the city and the open spaces there, but also for the development. So we're, actually, we're glad to do that. What's happened is that we are actually purchasing a lot from the Traditions. So this issue of this oak tree was back when the Traditions developed. So I'm actually taking over these guys' problem. But, what we're hoping is that it's not a problem, that it's a positive to the parcel. And that's why we asked to continue this until we can give the arborist more time to look at. We're actually relatively confident that the arborist is going to say that us putting a building on the site is not going to disrupt the tree any more than it's been disrupted. Because the way this villa lays out, it's the side yard of the villa, and so, it's the garage. And so, what, what we can do then is we could, in fact, build an eight-foot retaining wall very easily, because that's our eight-foot footing to the garage. Now, it's not eight feet, but it could easily be. So we can create a real clean edge, and not disrupt any grading from our building towards the tree. Is there a way I can show this on the... Used to be the technology was a lot simpler here. But I did take a picture of the tree, if you haven't been out there. So, oh. This is, good. So this is how the tree sits today. On the left-hand side is the rufted-in road that's going to go north into the next phase of Traditions. The front of this is the existing street going into our project, and then our villa, oop, would be like in this area. What's happened as the tree is development, partial development at least, has occurred around it, it's gone down into a hall. So one of the things that has to happen, when we develop it, if we're going to save that tree, is we have to grade the backyard of ours, so we can take water away from the street. Because quite frankly, today, it's sitting in a hall, not a good situation. We probably should go out there and grade sooner than later. But there has been work to the west, and on the south side, and one of the things that we want to hear from the arborist is that the tree's going to live. Because if it's going to live, it is really, it will be an enhancement to entrance our project and this villa. If though, the arborist says to us, no matter what you do, we think it's not going to live, or that it's going to struggle, then we really think we should deal with that issue before we put the villa in. Because, frankly, imagine if three years from now, the tree does die, first of all, who's going to take it down? Probably going to be, the homeowner's going to be mad at us that we sold him a lot that a tree was going to die on it. But even if it, once it does get down, now we're going to have this funny-looking side yard. And what should be happening then, is going back to the plan. If you remember, one of the, in our landscape plan, one of the changes that the commissioner made was deleted the requirement for boulevard trees on the road that's going north. Made a lot of sense, because if we put boulevard trees, then all we're going to do is affect this tree more. But if it does not, if it isn't going to make it, then we should end up with some type of a plan on how we re-landscape this. So I can tell you, when we are going to have arborists out there, we do want to find a solution. We would much rather have it be alive than die, but we want to make sure that we have a good long-term solution, and that the tree isn't going to just die on its own. And that if it was going to be stressed out, then we want to have a plan that we would bring back, that would replant this area, because it needs more than just one tree if this is gone. Our preference on the, on the conditions would be, I would rather not have to come back and replat the whole property, just from both the time and a, it's thousands of dollars to go through a plat for one lot. It's six to... It's six to $10,000. Not your fees, it's engineering fees and county fees and platting. So, again, our preference would be just be able to come back to the city and get it approved. And quite frankly, I think it's one that's going to get really resolved by working with the staff and coming up with a plan. I can only assure you that we are committed to saving the tree.
If it can be saved.
But, if it can't be saved, we really just don't want to sit there with that liability. And we'd like to get that resolved sooner than later. We are, our original plan was to put the model on this lot. We are not planning on putting a model up there now, we're going to put it on the next one. So, we have some time to figure out the right solution and to see what kind of condition the tree is really in come June or July. So, we're actually excited about this project. By the way, we have come to the conclusion, these aren't townhouses, they're villas. Somebody's going to have to figure it out. Detached townhouses never seemed like it made sense to me either, so. Or small, single-family houses, I don't know. But villas.
That sounds good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Again, not a public hearing, but if there's other commentary, we're open to that. Seeing none, we'll take it back to the commission. Any further comments on this?
Well, it sounds like they're trying to save and preserve with what's there, and I find that very admirable, and thank you for suggesting to do so. I think it's a good step, and it's really a win-win for the community with recognizing that if the tree's not going to survive, then, you know, to put something else in its place to be able to enhance the area. So, I think they're doing, taking a very positive step in that direction.
I don't think the tree's going to survive.
You do not?
No, no, because of the work that's done just to the west of it to put it in a hole for a whole year. It's been in the hole for a whole year.
So, you have looked at it?
Oh, yes, I have. I would recommend the last one out of the three.
Other comments?
That's my recommendation as well.
I'm completely comfortable with staff review on this one, so that's unanimous there that of the three options for condition number 30, we're on the last, the third of those. Any further discussion? I look for a motion to approve the final plat.
I'll make a motion to recommend the city council approval of the Chaska Bluffs final plat for a 25-lot detached villa subdivision on the Klingelitz property, southwest Chaska, subject to the 30 conditions listed.
Motion by Commissioner Bowie, a second. Seconded by Commissioner Kelly. Further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item number 12, concept plan for the Harvard West development, southwest Chaska.
So, we're looking at a concept plan specifically for the Harvest West development proposal. So, to give you an understanding of where this entire site, subject site, is located, it's located in our southwest Chaska area, specifically north of County Road 44 and just east of Highway 212 and nestled in between Savannah Way. So, you're looking at basically the full extent between Highway 212 up to Savannah Way and then up to a certain point on the north side here. So, here's a more zoomed-in perspective of that in terms of the area that we're looking at tonight. So, the Harvest and Savannah Estates are just on the east side of Savannah Way. So, now we're kind of jumping across the road now and starting a development plan on the west side. So, the concept plan request is specifically for 125 lots, and this is split up between two different product types that they're proposing out there. So, 54 for single-family lots and then 71 lots designated for the villa product. In terms of how this use fits in with the southwest Chaska plan, the use does fit in. Specifically, our plan called out a public park in this general vicinity, as well as a potential electric substation to serve the electric needs of this area. To note on the substation, so our electric department has looked into this a little bit and has expressed the need for a substation in this area. It's, at this time, the location is to be determined, although they have encouraged and staff is hopeful that the location of it would locate on the west side of Highway 212 and more of the business park designation of the city. So, we'll continue to work with the applicant and our electric department to really solidify that location for the substation. So, here is their, basically, site forces exhibit, existing conditions, kind of the main pieces of the site that we're looking at is comprised of 57 acres. It's mainly composed of open farmland today. They have done some wetland delineations out there, and this subject area that we're looking at proposes, or there's at least three wetlands in this general vicinity. Like I said before, there are three major street frontages of this development, which is kind of an important piece to recognize and look at in terms of how it influences the site. With Highway 212 on the west, County Road 44 on the south, and Savannah Way on the east there. And then, another important aspect of this site is there are grove of trees specifically in the center of the site that are significant in terms of preserving and showing how they can be incorporated into that public park piece. So, to kind of give you an overview of what the Traditions development is proposing in terms of the different types of products or lot sizes that they have in the Harvest right now, I'll start on the east side of Savannah Way. But they've kind of shown in a color-coded format kind of their different product and lot size types. So, you've got kind of the larger or wider lots abutting the bluff and kind of more interior to the Harvest. Then they have more of kind of their typical single-family, a little bit smaller than these bluff lots, more in the interior. And then, in this yellow, which we'll be seeing at a later date, is their proposal for cottage or villa-style homes, more on the western edge of that development. So, tonight, we're specifically looking at the blue and red components that you see. And again, this is just to show kind of that breakup of different type of products that have been proposed or will be proposed. So, the blue is indicating the villa-style product that they're proposing tonight, and that'll be composed of 71 lots. And then, the single-family, your traditional single-family product is in the red, so more in the center of the site. So, they have indicated to us that Pulte Homes would be the builder for this area. I think that's still yet to be completely solidified, but they have given us a couple elevations of their single-family and their villa-style homes. So, the top is obviously the single-family, typical single-family product that you see, and then the bottom is the villa style. And if you can recall, the villa style was actually incorporated into the Brooks Ridge development that's being constructed right now. So, both these products, the villa style has been able to achieve the anti-monotony policy in their Brooks Ridge development, so they will be carrying that through this development. So, there is a request tonight to be exempt from that rule-based on this type of product. In terms of the site plan, this is just a more simplified look in terms of how the site is going to lay out. Might be harder to read on this slide, but, so the main access to this development is going to be off of Savannah Way, so it will line up with Vista View Drive to the east there and provide that connection into the site. There will be a secondary access when the north side is looked at for review and approvals, and that will line up with the other Harvest entrance into their development on Farm Hill Boulevard. But again, this, the main access is just off of Vista View Drive and providing internal access through the site. I think the big piece of this development that's different from what we've seen in the southwest area is the fact that it's incorporating a public park in the center of its site. This is roughly 12 acres in size that they're proposing in the center there. And again, this is to stay in line with our guidance in the southwest Chaska plan to provide a public park in this general area, so that is what they're trying to achieve here. And I'll kind of go into more detail in a later slide about kind of the makeup of what's being proposed there. Trails and connections in this development are going to be very important based on the fact that they're providing a public park. We want to make sure that residents outside of this neighborhood slash development are able to efficiently, conveniently, and safely find this public park. So, the aspect of providing sidewalks on both sides of the street will be highly regarded in line with our policy to provide that, but also showing how they connect into the park. In terms of a trail connection, we have the regional trail on the east side of Savannah Way. So, providing, again, a convenient and safe connection point across Savannah Way on Vista View Drive for people to connect over to this area will be something that we're going to look at in more detail during their preliminary and something that we'll start conversations on in terms of how that's going to happen. I think this road will definitely bring in some traffic, and therefore, having a very clearly defined pedestrian crossing at that point is going to be very important. Trails inside of the park are obviously a big component, too, and connecting kind of the different areas of the park, so we'll look into that again in more detail as we go through the preliminary. Screening is going to be a big piece that we look at as a part of this development, too, given the fact that they have three major street frontages. And if you can remember when we went through the Savannah Estates development and when Club West Six came back for their final plat, the screening along the edge abutting Savannah Way was of utmost importance in terms of how that was going to be done. So, we will just stress the same notion and encouragement as we go into preliminary in terms of them providing adequate screening along Savannah Way, County Road 44, and Highway 212. And we would also stress the importance of being consistent with what we did on the east side. So, looking at how they did the birmingham and landscaping plans over there would be what we would want carried through on this site as well. So, that would be true to the Savannah Way side, as well as the County Road 44 side that was incorporated in Savannah Estates. Setbacks, there's a lot of setbacks to keep in mind for this site in particular, given the fact that, again, they have three major street frontages, so there are centerline setbacks that need to be adhered to. They have provided and shown those setbacks in this concept plan just to get an understanding of where those are at, and they've done some reconfiguration as well after putting those in. So, that's a big piece of it. Wooded steep slopes, wherever those are delineated on the site, which would probably be mostly in the passive park area of the public park. But, again, providing the required setbacks from those delineations will be important in figuring out as they move forward. The public open space, we do have a setback from that, which is 40 feet, that we want to make sure they're aware of as they continue to move forward. So, any of the lots that abut the public park will have to adhere to that setback. And I think specifically, we tried to note it, basically where there's connection provided from the neighborhood into the park where the trail is located and showing more of a buffer between the lots and that trail to really emphasize an opening there and an opening into a public space. And then, in terms of the wetlands, you know, where they're delineated, they'll obviously have to provide a buffer strip around them of 30 feet. So, going back to the park component, again, they're proposing 12 acres of their overall site to be attributed to that use. It's basically broken up into two different areas in terms of how it's formatted. So, there, the south side is very much the active side of the park. It has more openings, it's not as wooded. There are significant trees there that will obviously have them survey and provide a preservation plan on. But this area lends itself to be the more active side of the park, as denoted by our Park and Rec Director as well. So, really trying to figure out, you know, how recreation facilities, equipment get fit into that is something that we'll be working through. And then, the other area of the park is the passive area, which is basically at the start of the wetland and then up to basically the edge of the wooded area. And as noted in the parks memo, that this would be a great area for more passive uses and natural trails and education to occur within that. So, as I stated before, I think one of the big components of this is the exposure and connectivity into this park. You know, it's not necessarily on a very exposed roadway or anything like that to indicate that there's a public park within this neighborhood. So, being able to provide the openness on essentially the eastern edge of this park as it abuts Vista View Drive is going to be important to give people that view shed that there is a public park there and that they can go into that park. So, we've kind of noted it in our staff report to further analyze this view shed into the park so that it's providing a significant and adequate exposure for people to find the park. The connectivity into the park is very important as well. From Vista View Drive, they will be providing sidewalks on both sides of the street, but again, just making sure that those line up appropriately with the connection into the So, during their preliminary seminal, when they come forward with that, we will be asking them to provide some view shed exhibits showing how they will be able to provide that exposure into the park for people to easily find and connect into it. And then, as I stated before, the setbacks and buffers necessary for that need to be addressed at that time. So, as they move forward for their next application reviews, they will have to come through with a preliminary plat and rezoning. So, given kind of the extent of the size of the development, it more than likely will be phased. So, in conclusion, we feel that they provided us with a pretty good concept plan at this point and just have some items to address as they move forward for preliminary. So, we are asking you to make a motion to recommend approval to city council of the concept plan for the Harvest West based on the conditions listed in your staff report. I can answer any questions? I can answer any questions you have, otherwise the applicants are also here.
Okay, questions for Liz?
I guess the one question that I have is, is how firm is... and that's probably for the applicant. Is it possible that there will be more national, different national builders besides Pulte or...
Yeah, and I mean, I'm not sure if they know the answer to that quite yet, but they would be able to give you more updated information on their direction with that.
Definition of a park, I'm just curious, is that considered open areas that would have soccer fields? Is it just park benches, picnic tables? I don't know what that means.
For this specific park or... Well, I think the program is still being worked out in terms of the different equipment that's going to be provided in there. So it could be anything from a basketball court, a tot lot, a tennis court, a mixture of those, all of them, a few of them. I mean, that's yet to be determined.
It's a neighborhood park, it's not a community scale park.
I didn't know if it was just an open area or what it was, so... Okay, that helps me to visualize a little bit with what you're doing. Thank you.
Other questions?
I have a question for Liz. You know, this is a lot of density here, especially when the rest of the phases get built out. And the one piece I don't see all in this that I would love to see is how it fits within the regional trail system, the connecting trails between cities. You know, how do you get from here to downtown? How do you get from here to Victoria to Janhassen to the various regional trails around here? Because when you see that, then you see some, potentially, some gaps. You know, should there be something along the 44 side of this that's part of that connector that now is the time to build rather than trying to shoehorn it in later when it's more expensive, so...
Right. And we can definitely provide an exhibit like that during the preliminary to kind of maybe show more of a zoomed-out perspective of the connectivity into the site. And I think, as I mentioned in my staff report, too, is the future plans to do improvements on County Road 44, which would also be looking at the extension of the regional trail along there. That's been kind of a project that's been waiting to happen and waiting for that trigger moment, which is basically with the intersection coming in fairly soon here. It's going to trigger all of that improvement to be done on County Road 44.
At this stage, that context would be really, really helpful, so thank you.
And we can definitely provide an exhibit during the preliminary.
Yeah, because I'd like to know, too, like you said, the timing between starting to build and the interchange and all that, how, you know, we're going to have a whole bunch of extra traffic before we have the interchange there or not.
Absolutely.
Okay, no more questions for Liz? If the applicant would like to say a few words, that would be great.
Good evening, Commissioners. Patrick Rossi with Tradition Development. I want to thank you for taking the time to hear about our concept plan for the Harvest West tonight. I think, I'll start by saying that I think Liz did a wonderful job explaining our concept here. We think we have a great site to work with, and we've benefited from the previous work that's been done by the city of Chaska and the guidance with the comprehensive land use plan and Southwest Chaska Plan. The site is filled with natural amenities. I think there are three natural wetlands on this first phase, and the heavily-wooded area in the center just makes for a wonderful location, so we're really excited about it and happy to have this on our project list. So we're planning to move forward this year and hope to build during the summer, and we've been working with Pulte. And your question about other national builders, we don't have any relationship with any other national builders on this site. Traditions Development with Pulte out in this area of Chaska goes back well over a decade, and we've jumped the start on this a bit to further that relationship with Pulte. But I will say, as of this time, we haven't inked the deal, so to speak, with Pulte Homes. So I can't say for sure that the elevations that we've seen tonight and Pulte will go forward. We're still open on the builder, and I'll also add that we have our in-house builder at Tradition Development, Robert Thomas Holmes, who builds similar product, and they are deeply interested in this site as well. So with that, I'll leave it for more questions. I'm available for more questions from you. I'll add that we have our engineering consultant, Dave Nash, from Alliant here this evening, and he's able to help with more of the detail-related questions if there are so.
Questions for the applicant?
Are any of the villa homes going to be geared with on-grade as opposed to having basement to give the older people like me not having basement steps? Are any of that thought at all?
Yes, Commissioner Cross. Pulte mentioned that exact feature, that they would like to include the possibility of a slab-on-grade model. I will add that our internal builder, Robert Thomas, is now producing a similar slab-on-grade villa. The Pulte products are about in that 2,000-square-foot range. I think we're similar, maybe up to about 2,500 square feet slab-on-grade.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And that's just a comment of mine, too. I'll echo what Commissioner Ross or Cross was getting at, and that I think it's great to see more housing types. We have seen a lot of two-story, single-family homes in this area, so it's great to have these villas showing up now. I think it's much needed.
I would agree. We see the demand. It's the market demand, and we're building these products throughout our developments. We have one of our signature developments in Lakeville at the Branchen Farm, where these have gone over quite well, and are rolling out a similar product over in Woodbury this year as well.
That's great.
Other questions?
No, I'd just be echoing the same thing. The only thing I'd like to add to it, though, is just speaking as an empty nester right now, is to consider adding that third stall onto the garage, because, you know, you got your toys and you've got to be able to put stuff somewhere. So, I mean, you need the small house, but you also need to have a place to put that, too. Just a thought.
Duly noted, but we'll take a note on that. I know that some of our other products that we've developed in the past, they come across with a two-car entry, but they're a double-stacked garage, so you get three to four spots tucked under there, so plenty of room for...
Just wanted to throw that in.
Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you.
I'll take it back to the Commission for any further discussion.
I just like the variety of what we're doing here now.
You know, it is consistent with the plan. There is a lot of density there. I like the park in the middle.
I do, too.
It's a unique plus.
And much needed. I don't think the Harvest has... well, it does, but not 12 acres.
It's an open space, but not really a park.
Yeah, not really a park, so it'll be a great amenity for that whole area.
So I think at this point in the process, we should roll it forward. You bet.
All right, well, at that point, then, I guess I would look for a motion to approve the concept plan.
I'll put out a motion to recommend to the City Council to approve the Harvest West concept plan for 125-lot subdivision on 57 acres of land in the Southwest Chaska growth area, subject to the 26 conditions.
Motion by Commissioner Kelly. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Dahlke. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Onto other business. Commissioner Kelly?
I have nothing to say today. I'm speechless. Commissioner Bowe?
Just a quick update on the task force?
Yes, the City Square West task force.
Yeah, so we've had two meetings so far. This last meeting, we saw four, I would say, concept plans for the block.
Four, good.
Uh-huh. All over the place as far as what's included.
Wildly different plans.
Wildly different, some with the library, some without. So it's exciting to see. I think all of the information is on the city website, if anyone's interested in taking a look at it, so...
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Cross?
I'm wondering if we have some policy to have mud taken care of at construction sites, you know? It's the mud that's rolling out onto 41 from the... What is it, flats? Anyway, from the Dairy Queen and so forth. There is mud, and I'm wondering if we can require sweeping or something.
Oh, yeah.
We should do that daily.
Yeah, part of their common permit, I'm sure the price is coming as a... we can let Matt note that, take a look at.
That needs to be addressed.
Soil and water conservation is usually right on top of that. That usually monitors the site piece of it, so...
And I'm just wondering, I realize this, all this is phased in and it'll take several years to so forth, but are we going to get ahead of our sewer and water with the need for water with all this construction? Well, we need another water tower, et cetera.
Yes and no.
All right, perfect.
The, as if we're talking about east of the road, or east of 212, and kind of up in this Harvest area, and then south of there, really to the school, all the water and all the sewer are pretty much there already. We built, if you might remember, we built an 18-inch water main before 212 and before we annexed Lake Chaska Township into Chaska. We built it down from Engler Boulevard, along the future at that point, Highway 212, and down Engler, or down, at that time it was County Road 140, now County Road 44 slash Big Woods Boulevard to downtown, because we needed additional water pressure in downtown. And so there's a significant water line which exists out here, which meets the capacity requirements. When we develop the industrial park to the west of the interchange, we'll have a need for water storage, not pressure, and we will need to build a water tower west of 212 and kind of north of County Road 44 for storage, really for fire protection purposes. And we've kind of got that planned in the plan, but that's really dealing with the industrial areas out there, and it's not storage for residential, it's really storage for fire protection. We've got sufficient pressure out there, because we're dropping in elevation, and so the water pressure actually gets high. We actually have to depressurize it, otherwise you wouldn't want to flush, especially when you got to downtown. And so it's not an issue of capacity or pressure, it's really just storage out to the west of the freeway. West of the freeway, that area does require sanitary sewer, and it'll be a major upgrade to get sanitary sewer west of 212, but there's a program for that as well. So everything kind of east of 212, above the bluff, is really very well set for sewer and water. West of 212, we have water in place, we'll need to add a water tower for storage, we'll need to be in sewer. South, along County Road 61, old 212, there we would need water and sewer extensions to get into those areas. And so it's not a level playing field, that's why I said yes and no. Kind of depends on where you're pointing to at the time, would give you a different answer.
Thank you.
Yep.
That's all.
That's all? Commissioner Dahlke?
Nothing except to, I guess, commend you guys and yourself for plowing us through a lot of stuff today.
Okay.
Liz's got to be tired of talking.
That's right.
10:30.
That's right, yeah. I think we did good to get out of here in less than three hours.
So the only other thing I'd say with that is, could we have done any of this last month, or did this all just pile into this month?
It just all piled into this month.
Okay.
Name of the game.
More of a regular month next month, I think.
Yeah.
Good, all right. I just had two things. One, I wanted to second what Commissioner Bowie said about the City Square West project. A lot of great ideas, a lot of creative thinking going into this. I think there's general consensus on the objectives for that site, and boy, there's a lot of potential there and some really cool ideas. So I'm excited to see that project continue to move forward, and it's moving forward really pretty fast, so that's exciting to see as well. The other project that's kind of come back to life is the wayfinding sign project, and it will be great to see that to continue to move forward as well. So, I don't know if you want to add anything on that?
Yes. Maybe. We will be, we're trying to schedule a joint work session for the City Council, the Planning Commission, the Park Board, and the Downtown Business Association to kind of bring together and finalize the wayfinding piece. And so I know the Downtown Business Association kind of got a sneak preview the other weekend and/or the week, I should say, and we're just trying to find a slot where, before we get into budget season, where we can get the council and everybody together and talk about it in one place and try and see if we can get all the heads nodding in the same direction, and then we can start carrying things out.
Well, it's a great project, I'm excited to see it moving forward, so... Okay, with that, I'll look for a motion to adjourn.
I still move.
Moved by Commissioner Cross. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. We're adjourned. Thank you.